Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to Peter Township Council of Order for Monday, September 26, 2022. Mr. Law, please come in.
Mr. Baroska will not be here tonight. Ms. Schinelfeld?
I'm here.
Mr. Arkery?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. O. Our House Full Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on this evening's agenda is going to be a conditional use public hearing. The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to accept comments on the proposed station warehouse development located at 324 Venetia Road. Public hearing was advertised in the Observer Reporter as well as on Peter Township's website. The property was posted, notifications were sent off to all property owners within 600 feet of the proposed development. It will be a brief presentation by township staff as well as the developer, and this will be followed by questions from council as well as comments from the public. Action on the conditional use is scheduled for the first council meeting in November. Mr. Law, I'll turn it over to you.
Actually, did I write the first meeting in October, I meant?
You did.
The thing that I would like to start with before I turn this over to Mr. Coons is to have a brief explanation of what it means to be a conditional use. We haven't done one of these for a while. As a conditional use, the developer has a right to develop this property in the manner in which he has proposed. But because this is a conditional use, council has the ability to look at specific conditions that may exist on this site and set reasonable conditions beyond that which would normally be contained inside of the zoning ordinance. So the whole idea behind this public hearing process is to gather information from the planning commission, from the township staff as well as residents, for the purpose of making a determination of conditions that will be set at the point in time of approval. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Seth.
Neil Micic is the owner of three properties along Venetia Road at the southwest corner of the township, being 320, 322, and 324 Venetia Road. These are all currently vacant properties directly adjacent to one another. Across each of these three properties, or all of these three properties, is where he's proposing his office warehouse conditional use under the name of Station Warehouse. His proposed facility is a total of 6,000 square feet in size with 4,200 square feet of warehouse space, 600 square feet of office space, and 1,200 square feet of maintenance space. In conversations with Mr. Micic, his intention is to have what he calls a clean facility here, the storing of electronics in a well-regulated climate environment, and I'll let him provide some additional details about that later this evening. As it stands, his site plan shows a total of seven proposed parking spaces, a dumpster enclosure, and a store motto management facility, all the amenities and accessories we would see as part of a site plan approval or proposed site plan. The proposed building itself is predominantly a brick facade with some faux brick windows, a standing seam metal roof, singular main door entrance, and two garage doors across the different facades. The facade that would be facing Venetia Road would just have a single exposed entrance door there at the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. Section 44406 of the supplemental regulations includes a certain number of specific regulations for this type of use. Staff sees no issues with any of those supplemental regulations. In addition to that, there are separate conditional use criteria established in Peter's Township Code of Ordinances as it pertains to this proposed conditional use. Staff, they sees no issues with those as well. Staff has reviewed this with the planning commission for a recommendation to council at our September 15, 2022 regular meeting. Ultimately, it was recommended that council approve the conditional use application pursuant to 11 conditions as outlined in my report to the council dated September 16, 2022. After the conditional use is acted upon, it is staff's intention to take the conditional use site plan back to planning commission in October, which ultimately would have to come back to council for final approval for the conditional use site plan, hopefully maybe towards the end of October, if not in November. Along with that will be a consolidation plan, which has already been prepared and provided to staff, that consolidates the three properties per one of the conditions on the planning commission recommendation to council for the conditional use application. We have Mr. Micic here this evening to answer questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions council has.
And for our court reporter, because this is a conditional use hearing, you do have to swear all the witnesses, including this individual who's about to speak, but if you want to do it collectively?
I'll agree, guys, for her.
I'd rather do it all at once, so if anybody wants to, you can give your spiel.
Anybody? If so, stand, please.
Anybody wants to give any testimony for this hearing?
That includes me?
Yes.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give, the whole truth and nothing but
the truth?
I do.
And before you start, just for a housekeeping matter, I know some of you have been through conditional uses before. You do sit as a quasi judicial body in these hearings, so you act more like judges than you do legislators. So that's why we swear the witnesses in, why they're subject to cross-examination, and why they're more witnesses providing testimony than they are just providing a presentation like you would see in a site plan approval. So this is something that if we do condition, they have to be provided with findings of fact, conclusions of law, and there could be ability to appeal any decision you make, not this evening, but when you vote on this matter. So you've been sworn, so.
So I'm Todd Micic. I'm actually Neil's brother. I'm here representing him tonight. He could not be here. Seth kind of nailed the use of the building. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but he's planning to store some of his collectibles, some cars. Also, we have a manufacturing facility right down the street, and we intend to store for short periods of time some equipment that requires conditioned space, so it will all be inside, and the space is fully conditioned.
Seth, if you can, because the record's going to need to reveal the basis for the conditions the council may put on this. I know that there's a recommendation. Can you just briefly explain what those are and why they're germane to this?
All 11 conditions.
You can go through them as quickly as you can.
Yeah, so there were 11 conditions recommended by the Township Planning Commission to council at their September 15, 2022 hearing. The first is that the conditional use approval is of concept only and does not approve any site layout or building design, which ultimately needs to be submitted to planning commission and staff at a later date. The second being that a consolidation plan be prepared for the three properties. And then the third is an outline of all of the supplemental regulations in the Township Code of Ordinances. The first being that no chemical or mechanical transformation or production of materials is subject to council. An inventory of any toxic, corrosive, flammable, carcinogenic, and explosive materials, chemicals, liquids, gases, or solids shall be updated annually and submitted to the township to be kept on record at the township's fire department. The third, a facility shall only have one point of ingress and egress to the public street right-of-way. Fourth, the excessive noise, dust, odor, vibration, or light shall not be generated to disturb the surrounding neighborhood. The next is the ground surface of off-street parking and loading spaces shall be paved with bituminous brick, concrete, or stone block paving materials to protect the surrounding neighborhood from inappropriate dust and other disturbances. The next, the hours of operations for material pickups and delivery shall be limited to 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The next is a setback of 100 feet shall be between the office warehouse facility and the residential district. A buffer area of 25 feet should be planned in accordance with section 44505 of the Township's zoning ordinance. The next is that all aspects of the operation shall take place indoors. The next one is an annual inspection of the Township Fire Department shall be required for conformance with general health and safety regulations. The next one is no more than one sign shall be permitted. Said signs shall be a ground or a wall sign. And the last one, item K, any additional standards that are needed to protect public health, safety, and welfare, or to address unique characteristics of a particular site defined by the Township Planning Commission shall be complied with by the landowner and/or developer. The fourth separate condition placed by planning commission is that they have to provide sufficient parking to the rate of one parking space for every 750 square feet of gross floor area. That the, and the fifth is that the exterior building materials on all sides shall include brick-to-grade, stone, or other suitable building materials as approved by planning commission and council. The sixth condition is the north and south elevations include the recessed brick faux windows, as depicted in the drawings prepared by Way Architects and Design Partners, LLC, dated May 6, 2022. The seventh, the building, the final building be designed with a pitched roof with materials that the planning commission deem are compatible with the surrounding residential area. Eight, if needed, a public fire hydrant shall be installed in accordance with the Peter's Township Fire Department location requirements. Nine, the site layout provide the Peter's Township Fire Department access to the rear and sides of the building, or all buildings be equipped with a fire suppression system. Ten, final site plan approval from gateway engineers is required. And 11, Peters Creek sanitary authority approval.
So to answer Mr. Smith's question, all of these conditions relate to questions of public safety. There are also intended to address the fact that this, this building, although it sits where it does, is, is across the street from, from properties that are zoned residential, and so the intent is to make sure that the character of the building is in keeping with, with the development in that area, so.
Does the applicant have any objections to any of the proposed conditions?
Now, we're prepared to meet us. High condition.
I've seen a lot more.
I have a question for you. I know this has to go through a whole process, but, you know, one of the, the planning commission's recommendations or conditions was that the layout provide the fire department access to the rear and sides of the buildings. I assume that's for fire-related issues.
Yes.
Or all buildings be equipped with a fire suppression system.
That's the alternative.
Okay.
My guess is, and I could be wrong, but my guess is on this site, you're going to have access to all the sides of the building.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, we sort of know what he's going to use this for, but what about 20 years from now? They decide to sell that, and now we're dealing with some of these going to be housing, say, flammable or hazardous materials in there. Would we, do we have the right to say no?
Well, the condition, the conditional use already limits what kind of things can be stored there, but in terms of fire safety, this idea of either a sprinkled or building or a building that has access on all sides is the standard by which we, we do all commercial structures.
Well, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm saying that, that the fact that they're talking about fire suppression and, and there was some, I believe that there were some, you know, annual inspections of, of, or something in here about what kind of chemicals are being kept on there. I mean, I know that's not going to be this situation, but I, my concern would be down the road. I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't that fire suppression always be a fire suppression system? Shouldn't that always be the norm? Because you never know, I mean, what, what's going to happen to that building 10 or 15 years from now.
Well, a fire suppression system can't always be the norm because the building code doesn't call for it. The reason why you can make this condition on this building is that in fact you're dealing with a conditional use. Normally, we can't go beyond the building code. In Peter's Township's case, prior to the adoption of the Uniform Construction Code, we had already set a, a restriction that required fire suppression systems in buildings of 10,000 square feet or more. That actually goes beyond what, what the building code provides for, but because it was grandfathered in, you could do that. But on a, on a, a structure that is not subject to conditional use, you could not require that. Now, there is a limit, like I said, there's a limitation on what can be stored. Can you read that again, Seth?
Well, it talks about, you know, there's an inventory requirement to be submitted with the Township Fire Department about any of those toxic, corrosive, or flammable materials.
Can you read it, Seth?
Yeah. An inventory of toxic, corrosive, flammable, carcinogenic, and explosive materials, chemicals, liquids, gases, or solids shall be updated annually and submitted to the township to be kept on record at the Township Fire Department.
I, I understand that. So obviously, you can store flammable materials there. Not that they're going to do it, but I'm thinking down the road, right? And you're, and you're saying that, you know, there's a concern about there being residential properties, you know, across the street. Who knows what's going to be to the sides of them? My, my problem is, is that why don't we have that? That should be in every commercial-type enterprise, because you never know what's going to go in there 10 or 15 years from now, or 20 years from now, and what the, the jointing properties are going to be like. I mean, if we have to amend something, then, you know, we're not going to do it in this case, but we need to amend that. We shouldn't say it should be in every case, but it should be the, it should be presumed to be that unless there's some specific reason not to do it.
Well, again, according to the Uniform Construction Code, the, the, for a commercial building, the number, the square footage is much higher. In Peter's Township, we actually have a far more restrictive requirement. If, if one wanted, because this is a conditional use, and I'll defer to the solicitor, I think you could set that as a condition if that's what you propose to do.
Yeah, but it doesn't bind his successor.
You could condition that going forward, that it'll run with the land, this use or whatever use goes in after it. You know, it's not just unique to that. And you don't have to set your conditions in this public hearing. When you ultimately vote to make your decision, that's when you have to go through the lineage.
I, I understand. I'm just throwing that out there because, you know, they, they're going to spend a lot of money to get from point A to point B before they come back. And if, you know, if that's not going to be something that, you know, that could be a potential issue, and I think that, you know, everybody needs to know that.
And, and council, if it chose, because this is a conditional use, could, could require that on this development? You could do that.
You could eliminate the option, just require it if you want.
Okay. I, I have no problem with what they want to do. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there that, like, you know, it gives you an either-or, suppression system or some, you know, whatever that was, or, you know, be.
Yeah, and that's the recommendation, the council, you guys can just say no.
I mean, if this was in the middle of, like, you know, there weren't any residential properties around, then, you know, I, I just think that's something. You don't have to address it. I'm fine with what you want to do. I'm just throwing that out there to.
Well, just, I would make one comment. I think that your point's valid, but you mentioned spending money, and we've been working to the current township code, which buildings under 10,000 square feet do not require fire suppression. We've met the condition of being able to get fully around the building. So we spent a lot of money getting it where it is today and working with Seth and Ed, and then to throw on a 12th condition after 11, I don't, I think that's just a bit overreaching. I, I certainly understand.
Oh, I'm not throwing it on there. It says in one of the conditions that was read into the record that something about...
The site layout provide the Peter's Township Fire Department?
Access, or all buildings be equipped with a fire suppression system.
And just so you know, sir, through the process, council itself decides what condition. I mean, so they could add 15 more, they could make it one, so there is no guarantee when you get this far that they're going to do anything to.
I, I have no problem with what you were proposing. I'm just throwing that out there to enlighten the township business if we could do something.
And again, my concerns about future uses of things that we approve.
And this is one of those rare occasions for us, we don't see a lot of conditional uses, where you do have the ability to go beyond the ordinance and add condition from the record testimony what's going on at this site.
I'm not proposing that, you know.
And what I don't want to, Ms. Lee, counsel, is that you do, you will not have the ability to require this in commercial structures under 10,000 feet, because that already exceeds what's provided for in the universe, the, the construction code, so you already have a more restrictive situation here. And what we do with all commercial developments is exactly what's occurring here. When you cannot get access to the building on all sides, what is always offered up as an alternative is, is to install suppression systems.
I understand. Thank you.
You characterize some of the items and uses to include perhaps some motor vehicles that would be stored there and other collectibles. Is any of that intended to be stored outdoors?
Nothing outdoors.
And the statement that I guess I would reflect on is I would be concerned about storage of collectibles outdoors. Not that I would question the Micic's opinion of what is a collectible, but we certainly have encountered numerous situations throughout the community where that, that would be a disputed characterization of a.
Do you want to add that as a condition?
Supplemental, supplemental regulation H, which is already included in the record, all aspects of the operation shall take place indoors. That would include storage and ongoing use of the facility.
I wouldn't have read that to that degree, but.
And we, but we can clarify it to read that when it gets approved.
And motor vehicles, you know, how do you, how do you say that that's not in a parking spot, so?
I understand.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, not like my neighbor down here, but.
Motion to the council, then?
I'll make motion if we close the public hearing.
Public comment.
I'll second.
Motion to the second all, please, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting is closed. Thank you.
Nothing for you, Paul?
Nope, you're allowed to go. You're excused.
Sure.
Next item on the agenda will be approval for minutes from the meeting until September 12.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to the second all, please, say aye.
Aye.
Post, there's six, nothing. Special reports, still nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Audience comments. This is an opportunity for a member of the audience to address council on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes. Everybody from the audience that wishes to address council at this time. Okay, seeing no move into unfinished business, several items there, and first will be abandonment of township property along Lexington Drive.
So on July 11th, following a lengthy discussion, council tabled an agenda item related to abandonment or transfer of a small tract of land located in vicinity of 109 Lexington Court. The reason why it was tabled is that there was a split between council at that particular meeting. There were, were six members in attendance, and towards answering, I think is the threshold question, does Peter's Township Council desire to abandon a 15-foot tract of land which was dedicated to township as open space as part of the Colonial Manor Plan Number Two in 1975? As I had indicated at the time, when this small tract of land was acquired as part of the open space, the intention was for it to provide a way of ingress and egress from what's shown as parcel A. Since then, the township has acquired additional land above parcel A, and this has not been, nor do I ever perceive that it will be, used as access. The, the adjacent property owner is asked for consideration as, as to transferring the land. The one thing that I think was conclusive out of our last discussion is that if in fact we were willing to abandon this piece of property after some action by council indicating that our intention to do so, it would leave the adjacent property owner, or any of the adjacent property owners, the opportunity to go to court and to seek a wide title action on that piece of land, so.
We had also, I think, asked for the solicitor to advise us with regard to the mechanics of being able to do this?
We looked at this back in the day. What I forget on this one, Paul, is this just an unimproved alley, or is it just grass right now?
It's not, it's not an unimproved alley. What it is, is a par, it's a 15-foot swath of land that was dedicated to the township as open space. That was its purpose. There's a revert, there's a reverter clause in the deed of dedication that says if the township ever abandoned it for this use, it refers back to the, to the developer. I don't think the developer's going to have an interest in that, in that part of land, and I didn't even know if the developer's still around. And so therefore, what we would do is bring it back to council with either an order to resolution of abandoning the property and allowing someone to go to court to claim it.
Yeah, much different than abandonment of a road and the process, I think, Mr. Lusti, you're thinking might have to happen. I believe we can do this by resolution because it is just a grassy area. But I think this was just on the agenda to see if you wanted to take that expense to go that far.
Yes.
But the other, the other question, though, John, is Paul's recommendation here is that if we abandon it, we reserve an easement across it. And I'm not sure that if you only have, essentially what we have is a contingent interest in the property. We only have an interest in the property until we cease using it as open space.
As long as you hold it.
So if we grant an easement, I'm not sure if that easement survives once our interest goes away.
And I think we've talked about that before. I, I don't disagree with you. That comes up some problems because it is one of those, you either own it or you don't.
Right.
And we own it for open space or we don't. And to abandon it versus selling it, if we sold it off if we could, and reserve some sort of easement in the property, but that reverter clause might come into play as well. Says you can only use it for open space, and I'm not sure if some sort of utility easement would run afoul of that, but to Paul's point, the developer's long gone, and I'm not sure they're going to raise it, but academically, you're correct.
All right, because my concern is, as I recall what the law is, is that, you know, if you have essentially an interest in property that's contingent, and then you put an encumbrance on that contingent interest, that contingent, you know, that concurrence only lasts as long as you have an interest in the property. You can't, there's a, essentially, it's like a life estate. I mean, if you have a life estate and property, you can't go and grant an easement on the property because your interest only survives for as long as the life estate exists.
No, I agree. I mean, it's for a limited purpose, and I'm not sure we can do that.
I guess the question would be the gentleman that wants to buy it. I mean, would he, would he agree that, you know, if we abandon it, he'll give us the easement once he goes through the process of quieting title?
I mean, he'd have to almost do that potentially voluntarily.
Right, right, because we couldn't enforce it because he has no interest in the property now, right.
Well, he didn't have a standing issue to raise in a quiet title action. What would his, what would his standing be?
Well, he's been, from what I understand, he's been mowing it for 20-some-odd years, so he'd be asserting an adverse possession.
Yeah, but he can't because isn't it the township?
No, because it has to be actually, because we're a local municipality, we actually had to have used it for a public purpose. We're not exempt from that.
But I think he'd be odd because he'd want to make that claim against us, and we're walking away from it in advance of that, so I'm not sure who, who the actual defendant's going to be. I think to your point, Mr. Arkery.
But, but I would argue that we do use it for a public purpose in the sense that it's part of open space. The open space that's above it is no more tended than any other, and we have open spaces all across town.
Yeah, but we don't use it, we don't use it for any purpose. Just land being classified as open space doesn't protect it from adverse possession, I know, because I've litigated this issue. On the, on the local and the state level, on the federal level it does, not on the local level.
Well, couldn't the, couldn't the neighborhood property owner just bring the suit now?
Well, that's why, that's why.
Have us not defend?
Well, exactly.
Take no, take no interest in the litigation? I mean, they could argue that they've adverse, that they're underway, that they need the 21 years.
Right, they could do, they could sue us, and we could just take no position on it.
Yeah.
But they'd have to sue the contractor too, because ultimately the contractor's, because that's the catch-22.
The reverter.
Because, because if, his argument's going to, you're getting free legal advice tonight, sir. We're taking notes. So, I mean, if his, his, his argument's going to be that he's adversely possessed it because we haven't used it as, as open space, then we've already violated our, the terms of us taking the property so we wouldn't have an interest in the first place.
Yes.
It would have already reverted to.
To the developer.
To the developer.
I would much rather define what it is we're giving him, rather than to someone go into court and say that this hasn't been used for the purpose of which it's been, been dedicated, because I think then you bring into question all of that property. I think it would be much cleaner for the engineer to, in essence, define what that piece of property is, to bring a resolution to council so that we know exactly what it is we think we're abandoning.
Are we, based on that square there, Paul, are we not abandoning that whole, that whole stretch?
Only that little strip, not the part, not the parcel above that it's attached to.
Does that up to, up to the, to the corner of?
Right.
Yeah.
And I would much rather have that defined so that there's no question about what it is who owns.
Well, that would be a subdivision required to isolate that parcel. That would certainly be my thought.
And you, we don't, because I, and Seth may know the answer to this, but I'm almost positive, given it's the, the minimalist nature of that parcel, that we can do that subdivision without having to go through the, through the entire subdivision process, because there's a way to do that within our zoning ordinance.
Can't we just, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, sir. Please.
Phil Lindner.
You need to come up here.
Frank. Be prepared to state your address.
Quit claiming whatever it is. I have a question, that's the point, because as soon as we abandon it, we don't have any interest. Quit claiming.
Yeah, but then we're done.
But it doesn't give you.
Cutting through there.
I know, you know, that's why I only get into these things, because, you know, it's bad enough, and then everybody's going to be coming out of the woodwork wanting us to do stuff, and we're going to, this is more often.
But I mean, we're not using anyone.
May I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, my name is Phil Lindner, I live at 109, the, the strip of land we're talking about is 15 feet wide, and it's 235 foot long, where it abuts my property, ending at my property corner. And I've lived there 27 years, for that entire time, I've been maintaining that property to the extent it's been maintained. Part of it is grass that I mow as my side yard. There are also trees that, or legacy trees that have been there, some spruces, Osage oranges, there's quite a bit of ramble, I've cleaned it up to the best extent that I can in my position as not owning the land, but it reflects on my property. But if you drive by, you don't know that I don't own that. So I've cared for it, I've mulched it probably every third or fourth year, weeding every year. This spring, I cut down a spruce tree that was dying, it was dead, actually, and it was at risk of falling across my driveway. There are three other spruce trees, two of which are also dead, and one at the front of the property that is, had the same disease they're all getting. And the one I cut down this spring, I had the stump ground, can't even tell it was there, I did it at the recommendation of Ken's Tree Service, who said that tree's dead, could fall on your property. So, what I'd like to do, and I'd be happy to stipulate to an easement, or whatever process that makes sense for the township, what I'd like to do, and I offered to purchase it, if that's not possible, I'd be happy to follow whatever process you suggest, but my intent is not to build anything there, I just want to keep it and maintain it, I'll plant more trees and shrubs, that's what I've done, my wife and I have planted 150 around our, our property in the 27 years. And I'd just like to make it a very attractive buffer, if you will, for myself, as well as my neighbors. And now it is not really that.
Like six on two if I can. My name's Ted Ravick, I live at 106 Lexington, I've lived there for 15 years, and I just recently purchased 107 Lexington.
Your name, sir?
Yeah, we need your name.
Ed Ravick.
So you're the individual that purchased this, what I call it neglected property, instead of an improper characterization?
Correct. It's not anymore.
Now, right.
But, in defense, I've seen, you know, 107 Lexington, living across the street from it for a long time, and, and purchasing 107 Lexington, exactly what Phil was talking about, that stretch of land is useless. It is, there's more than probably what you're saying on that tree, there's one in the back that's completely leaning over, that if that thing goes, there's now, in 104 Bunker Hill, the, the people who just bought that house has three young kids, they're back there, there's one tree that it's, it's a Osage orange that is leaning so bad, one big storm comes down, and those kids are out there, they're hurt. So, there, there's some danger really kind of in neglect of that left land. So, what Phil, and I can attest to what Phil's done to his house, his house is gorgeous and everything around his house, maintenance wise, it's gorgeous, beautified in the neighborhood. So I have no qualms whatsoever of him purchasing it, and I think it would be kind of wise on our decision to allow him to purchase it because of the lack of maintenance.
And what council said before is, the way this is written is if we don't keep it, the township doesn't keep it as open space, it goes back to the developer, so we could sell it to you in fiction, and it wouldn't be yours, because we don't have the ability to do both. We, you know, we have to keep it or we lose our rights to it. What the manager was discussing is is possible abandoning it, so it just lets it loose for you to go, try to go to the court and get it. I'm not sure what, what would work, what I said, and I'm not sure this would work, whether the township would do even a license agreement to allow you to maintain and keep the property, you know, for whatever period of time while it remains under our watch, I'm not sure we could even do that, but.
Whatever approach the council decides on, I'm happy to make it a cross neutral activity.
Do you just want to maintain it, is that what you want to do?
I want to maintain it and beautify it, and I want to put up privacy screens of trees, which would benefit 107 Lexington.
I don't know why we couldn't grant him that use without getting into the intricacies of trying to transfer the property.
Seems like we keep our open space, give him some license agreement to do these improvements.
Yeah, I mean, if you're not concerned with owning it, and we just say you can use it, that makes things a lot easier than what we're batting back and forth here.
As long as that gives me the ability to maintain it, I'm fine.
Yeah, you just couldn't, you just couldn't sell it.
That's fine, that's fine, and like I said, I have no intention of building any structure permanent or casual anywhere near that property.
And we, by agreement, we can control that as well.
I'd much prefer we head in that direction.
Absolutely, that's fine. So you want to take a stab at a, terms of a license?
Take a stab at a, a motion to tell us to do that, that would be good.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to draft a license agreement with regard to the 15-foot wide tract of land at issue in Colony Manor Plan Number Two.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any further discussion from council? Audience, everybody, if they all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, okay, six, nothing on that. Next item of unfinished business will be resolution adopting the Peters Township Performance Management Policy, which I, I don't know how much we need to get into this.
Well, that's up to you.
Anybody want to make a motion as is, or?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution adopting the Peters Township Performance Management Policy with the revisions that Mr. Lowery has placed in since the last meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, okay, carries five, one.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution commending the Peters Township Employee Handbook as well.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host.
Nay.
Okay, five, one, carries. And final item of unfinished, finished business will be lease agreement with new singular wireless.
So, let me bring counsel up to date on where we are with all of the cable providers. Had a chance to meet with T-Mobile, T-Mobile is going to be installing an antenna similar to this on a tower that sits at the intersection of Rolling Hills Drive and Senator Church Road.
On the park property?
No, on, actually off the, right across the street.
Across from Peter, across from the church.
This is a picture of Druid Drive, Verizon Communications has entered into agreement with the power company to install a, an antenna array on the other side of this, so that's going to be occurring as well. Today, we got notice that AT&amp;T has gotten a highway occupancy permit for their small cell at Thomas and East McMurray Road, so that, that will be moving ahead as well.
Paul, where's this one at?
This one is on top of Druid Drive.
Way up on top of the hill.
Yeah. So.
And what, I'm sorry, and who is that?
Right there, that's AT&amp;T, but who's going to go on there is Verizon.
On the other.
Oh, Verizon.
Verizon, so you'll have both carriers on that tower.
All right.
So I, I had an opportunity to follow up with Verizon and their ability to co-locate on the tower that's proposed by AT&amp;T. And what they're saying is that that tower is not tall enough for them to be located in that secondary position. But, the thing that I would point out to you is that if Verizon's prepared to locate on power, power towers, there are two in Peterswood Park, one of which is just down the road from where we'll be putting up that 90-foot tower, and the other one sits on the top of the hill and is probably one of the highest points in Peters Township. And I think if what Verizon wants is something that's 200 feet tall, I don't think a pole that's 200 feet tall fits into Peterswood Park well, and they should take advantage of these locations as a way to address their concerns. I also had a, a chance to meet with Crown Castle, what they would be proposing is, again, a tower that is 200 feet tall, either in this location, or at the location of the old middle school. I don't think that's an appropriate structure for inside the park. So with that, I think, you know, I think the option we have with the, the lease that's been worked out with AT&amp;T makes sense, in addition to the fact that we're providing cellular, improved cellular service from AT&amp;T, it will result also in compensation to the township in the form of a lease payment of $2,000 a month, they will cover the attorney's fees that were used to draft this agreement, and then they will be providing sports lighting on the far end of the football field, and the estimated cost of that is $40,000 to $50,000, so. With that, it's my recommendation that township enter into an agreement, a lease agreement for that.
Paul, I have no, no reservations about going along with your recommendation, but I, I'm looking at this photograph that's up there, and I'm recalling conversations we've had about what it takes to operate the tower in this prior screen on top of the, the pole. There is a structure at the base of that that is, and I don't remember, eight by 10 or 10 by 12?
Well.
It's not just, it's not just the attachment on top of it.
It's just not that, and, you know, if you look at what they're going to be doing here, is they've got to bring power up to this site because it doesn't exist, and that's, there's actually some advantage to the township to have the, the extension of the power. But up in this corner, you see, there, there is this area that's going to be fenced off that has equipment in it, so yes, at the base of these towers will always be some equipment used in, you know, in relation to the antennas.
I, I just had a real quick question, the two tower, power line towers that you showed previous, how tall are those in general, right now?
You know what, I don't know, but my guess is that they're well over, well, my guess is they're probably at least 200 feet.
Okay, so the one tower would be essentially as big as those, as high?
Yes, in fact, I think if you want to get an idea of what a pole that big would look like, my guess is the ones down at Tar, are those 200 feet?
180.
180. There are, those are substantial structures.
Was he a plant?
No, he said for another reason.
Now, that it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I just had a question, that area of the equipment's going to be in, what kind of fence is that going to be? Going to be chain link, or is it going to be actual private?
I think it's a chain link fence. But there's chain link fence all throughout that area, so I don't think it's going to stay that way.
No, I was just curious, that's all.
Hey, Paul, per sentence of this lease, does AT&amp;T have the, they have, I think I'm right, they, they retain the ability to add another provider?
Yes.
Do we, and we have some sort of leverage or say?
We do, because that other provider would need a ground lease, and so we have the ability to control that by not issuing a ground lease if we chose not to.
Okay.
So with all of these potential areas of putting in cell towers, will the township be covered with all of the vendors to have adequate, you know, cell coverage, are we figuring?
No.
Yeah, so.
No. You, you are taking steps in the right direction, but, and Verizon's a perfect example. Verizon has a coverage problem in the same area that AT&amp;T does, and until Verizon does something on that end of town, and we don't control what their plans are, they'll have a coverage problem.
So, the part of town by like the crossroads? Or this part of town?
I'm saying.
I mean, they have a part, they have, the whole, the whole township has a problem with Verizon, if you ask me. But, but I'm not, that's not the only vendor, you know, I mean, I just was just, it's fixed this side, but then we can still continue to fix the other areas, or?
We can't fix anything. Only the, only the cell carriers.
But we can communicate to them that there's still going to be an issue.
And they understand that, in my discussions with them, they understand they have problems throughout town.
Right.
And I can tell you this, you, if, if you have friends who live on anywhere else in the city of Pittsburgh, these suburban communities all have problems with, with cell coverage.
They do, yeah.
Sir, anything else from the council, any comments, questions?
No, sir.
I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You snuck up.
I just wanted to ask.
Name and address, please.
Steve Rens, 838 East McMurray Road, I really live down. Mr. Lowery, I don't quite understand, are you, you saying that you're going to build the tower and you're looking at putting them on the, is it one or the other, are you going to put it on the power lines, or are you going to?
No, there's two different carriers.
Okay, so one carrier.
AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T is going to construct a 90-foot pole, on which they're going to attach sports lighting for the benefit of the township, and that's the proposal that's going to happen. What I'm saying is, one of my concern was, I know that Verizon has a problem in this area too, and we were trying to push AT&amp;T and Verizon to, to be able to use that pole to solve their problem. Verizon's saying they need to be much higher, they need to be like 200 feet up to do this. And my point is, if they need to be that high, rather than to install a 200-foot monopole there, given that Verizon's shown their ability and willingness to locate on, on high tension towers as they are currently doing in Druid Drive, we should encourage them to do the same here.
Yeah, so I brought that up to you last month, I talked to you about that, the one on Druid Drive, and you said that the power companies weren't allowing that anymore, is that?
Well, and I, and I will tell you, what I have been told by AT&amp;T is just that, but I've got T-Mobile and Verizon telling me they both have, have leases on those towers now. So I can only tell you what I get told.
Well, did you check with the utilities, I mean, is there, I mean, before you approved the, the building of a 90-foot pole, and then leaving AT&amp;T out in the wind, did you check first with the utilities, if that's possible?
Well, it's obviously possible because they're connected, they're, T-Mobile and Verizon are doing that. I would be making this recommendation regardless, because I think it's, quite frankly, in the township's interest to move ahead with this.
Okay.
And, and I think there's also real, real advantage in terms of what we're receiving, both in terms of the lease payments, as well as the sports lighting on that end of the field.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, I, I like the idea of putting it on an electrical tower, because, you know, why build another structure if you have one there, that's a great idea. I, I just, just want to make sure before we approve the one, that we don't, you know, cut ourselves out of not having AT&amp;T up there, that's all.
No, AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T.
I mean, Verizon, I got Verizon, I have no signal here, so, yeah, I know what you mean, okay. Okay, that's all I wanted.
Any other audience comments?
I'm going to make a motion that, to authorize the appropriate township official execute an option and lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS LLC for the purpose of installing and operating a cellular communication facility in Peterswood Park.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I carry six, nothing. So moving to new business, first item will be a request for support from Always Be Smiling for the construction of an activity in our activity center.
Yes, the, the item on council's agenda is to authorize a letter of support, Always Be Smiling wants to move ahead with a construction of a facility on property owned by Mr. Robinson for a, a center that's designed to support children and families who have disabilities. We have people in the audience here from Always Be Smiling, they wanted a chance to be able to talk to council about what it is they're, they're attempting to do and, and explain that better, and they're.
Just say, state your name.
Yep, Kristen Ubrex.
Dean Ubrex.
So I'll give you a brief overview real quickly of what Always Be Smiling is, and then Dean's going to give you what our future vision is, why we're really here today to talk about the activity center. So Always Be Smiling was founded two years ago in December of 2020, and it was in honor of my son who passed away a little over two years ago in July. He had multiple disabilities and a lot of health challenges, and so when he passed away, we made the promise that we were going to continue with his legacy on helping serve kids with, children, teens and young adults with disabilities and health challenges. We lived it for 16 and a half years, but it was 16 and a half when he passed away, and we.
And we know that there's a big gap outside the traditional school system to provide these kids and families an experience and services for, you know, with their disabilities and health challenges. So we have started that and have, if you want to go to the next slide, there's really four pillars in our program currently. Bennett had 20-plus surgeries. And like I said, he had multiple disabilities, but he also had a lot of health challenges. And he had two kidney transplants, so we spent a lot of time at Children's Hospital. So we serve families and children at Children's Hospital currently with buddy bags, giving them an opportunity to have something to be entertained while they're spending time at the hospital. The second one is the be together events. This is something we've expanded out currently, just bringing the families and children together as an experience. We've taken families and childrens to the Pirates game. We've done other events that we've gone to the Upper St. Clair Rec Center where we've done just activities with the families. We have another one coming up here October 2nd where we'll have a Halloween event to bring the families together. It's a great opportunity for socialization, allowing them to meet other families in their situation and having the kids be together along with the siblings. Our biggest part of our organization right now is our adaptive bike rides. Right now, our current program is out at the tandem connection. And we take families and siblings out on a bike ride and the special needs kids on an adapted bike. You can see the picture there, and we take them on a nine and a half mile bike ride. Currently, we're on pace to give over 100 bike rides to the families and children just this summer. So as you can see, it's a big need to get the kids out in nature, outdoors, experiencing something that they aren't able to experience in the past. And then our final one is Be Blessed, and that's just a program that's not defined, that we give the families and kids opportunities that are unmet needs. We just sent 10 kids to kidney camp. Families couldn't afford to go to kidney camp, so we supported them on doing that. That's just one example. But the biggest thing for us and the families have noticed is that we get it. And when the families and the children come to our program, they are so comfortable because we understand inclusion and diversity. And that's the biggest thing that we're looking at with this is that, you know, these kids deserve to be included into the community and be accepted. And because we lived that for 16 and a half years, we understand that there's that big need of really broadening the larger scale of inclusion into the community. So that's really how we got started with Always Be Smiling. But I'd like to let Dean talk about our future vision because obviously, these are just four things that we're doing outside of not having a building. And what the building can provide for us is to really expand out on our programming.
Yeah, there we go. So thank you. I'm Dean Ubrecht, Bennett's dad. And I'm excited to talk about this. As you saw, the adaptive bike riding program, you know, we take the kids out, mom, dad, we rent bikes, their siblings come out, and invariably, mom would hang back with the mom and talk about, hey, isn't this great? Is there anything else, other gaps? And a lot of them are like, this is the first time we've been out as a family. There's just nothing, we don't feel comfortable in the community. And like Kristen said, to have something that supports the inclusion and diversity and just different things. So right now, it's biking. Our hope is, with the Always Be Smiling Activity and Learning Center, is to be able to offer music therapy, horticulture, even when we did send 10 kids to kidney camp, kids like Bennett who had a Mickey butt and a feeding tube, that can't do overnight. We were talking to the nephrologists at Children's Hospital, and we said, but what if we brought them to the activity or the learning center and they were able to do day camp and have that experience? And just stuff like that, like these aha moments. And whether it was maybe doing a Monday night football party, just different things. And also, not only having those families, but also the buddy program and having kids come out. When we did it at the Upper St. Clair Rec Center, the pavilion, each child was matched with a buddy and just that inclusion that I really do believe that that's a great community benefit, that these kids and the broader community gets to interact with them as well. So this center, again, we're really appreciative of Jeannie and Tom Robinson, who graciously decided to partner with us, would be right adjacent to the Montour Trail, have great access for handicap accessibility, have a kitchen where currently the Watson Institute, where Bennett went to school in South Fayette, does an annual Buddy Biscuit program, they could come in and use that and do that as almost a field trip and a classroom outside of the classroom. Because one of the last things I'll leave you with is, all of these things, and whether there's a sensory trail and all of the different things there, after a school year ends, it's really tough for these families. There isn't the going to soccer or going away on different things, and it becomes very isolated. And we really are excited to be able to fill that need and make it a real community asset with regards to the activity center. So thanks for listening.
And this would be about a 3,000 square foot building? That would be kind of almost like a clubhouse type atmosphere, that it's a place for the families and kids to come hang out and be able to provide the programming and activities.
It could be a great addition to the township.
Yeah, I think Dean's fantastic. Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the appropriate township official issue a letter of support to Always Be Smiling in support of the design and construction of an activity and learning center for individuals with disabilities.
Second.
Okay, motion is made. Second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Curious six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Anything else? Let us know.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, thank you, and your wife.
Okay, next item will be awarded with a bid for furniture for Fire Station 3 through Pennsylvania Co-Stars Cooperative purchasing program.
Proposals, where we see them to the Co-Stars program from three vendors for the purchase of furniture for the fire station. The low bid was from Tri-State Office Furniture in the amount of $28,956.41. And it's my recommendation that we award a contract under Co-Stars in that amount to Tri-State.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry six, nothing. Next item will be approval for according purposes of the Springer subdivision plan.
Mr. Coons, a report gives you a history of the property, but the fact of the matter is, all this turns out to be is a, a simple subdivision. Both lots conform to current township zoning regulations. There were a number of conditions that were on the original subdivision that have been brought forward and are included in this plan, but it's, really gets down to a simple subdivision moving the lot lines.
I'll make a motion that the, the plan is hereby approved for recording purposes, and that's the Springer subdivision plan number one. Has shown drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping Inc. dated June 30th, 2022, for Thomas and Chrissy Springer. So were there any, there's no contingencies or anything, right?
Everything's been addressed.
Everything's been addressed.
Say again.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion from council? Audience, Keith, thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry six, nothing. Next item will be pre-qualification bidders for the construction of the Aquatic Center.
So as council is aware, the township authorized bids for this project last year. Those bids came in over what was the anticipated budget. In the fall, council authorized us to modify the drawings and look at rebidding the project. In the interim, the township has received a grant for $2 million in the, under the R cap program. As was explained at that time, that's a reimbursement grant. And so therefore, there would have to be, the grant agreement would need to be in place prior to awarding the contract. Mr. Derosky guarantees me that we're close to being able to complete that agreement. In addition, the township has received additional grants of $1 million from DCNR as well as $200,000 into the local share account. So from that perspective, I think what's in place now is as much grant support for this project as the township's going to receive. And so it would seem to be to make sense at this point, whether you're in favor of the project or in opposition to the project, to send this back out to bid for the purposes of determining what the actual cost of construction would be. We want to do this with three qualified bidders and a sample, the questionnaire is included in the, in the docket. So I guess my question is, does council want to proceed with us pre-qualifying bidders?
I, the answer to that general question is yes, but I would wonder, do we have the ability to inquire with regard to any litigation that the various proposed bidders are currently involved in?
Yes.
That's not a question that I'm seeing in the questionnaire.
We can add that as a question.
I don't know that that necessarily precludes somebody, but it's certainly become a criteria that we could use in making a determination.
Yes.
Do we have a list of suggested contractors that you're going to approach or?
Yes, there, there were either 11 or 13 firms who were pre-qualified the last time around. So we're going to approach those firms and give them the opportunity to resubmit for this. There is a question, question eight of the pre-qualification sheet says, within the last 10 years, has your organization completed all work awarded to it without paying liquidated damages? I mean, so there is some question, and bankruptcy is obviously another question that we ask of those firms.
We can ask the questions whether or not they're pertinent.
And I, I mean, quite frankly, I'm talking about as it would relate to the school district and the construction here in the township.
Okay.
At what point are we going to look at operations on this?
Well, if we're going to go out to bid, what we're going to do prior to considering the award of a contract, we're going to go back out and solicit proposals for the management of the facility so that you would have all of that in front of you prior to awarding a contract. I don't see us awarding a contract on, if, if we actually move ahead with this, I don't see us awarding a contract until the second meeting in January. So there would be plenty of time to be able to do that.
Well, I'll be shocked if any of the bids come back in the range of what we're hoping they, they will come in. But that being said, I'll make a motion that we authorize the township manager to establish a list of qualified bidders to serve as the general contractor for the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Project.
That certainly would be a second. I guess it would be of interest to me to think in terms of when we put the package out, to have it structured such that we have, you know, elements that could be bid options or add options or deduct options.
Well, that's, that leads into my next discussion. I do.
So, we have a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Any, any further discussion from council? Audience, anyone? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry six, nothing.
So as, as you will recall, when this was sent back to the architects, there were modifications made on the design in an attempt to reduce the cost of construction. So for instance, there was a, a small lazy river that was removed. And that, and by removing that lazy river, it removed a large retaining wall that was, was there. But at the time, the, the direction from council was to, to make modifications to the design, but, but not affect necessarily the, the programming elements. So one of the things of talking to the contractors that we discovered was the construction technique on the building was driving a lot of cost. And so the, the building itself has been modified in hopes of bringing in a bid that's, that's more acceptable. But my question to you is this. Do you, and, and this would take some effort, and there would be some expense to be able to, to do this in terms of getting the project out to bid, do you want to make the spray park an alternate? And if you make the spray park an alternate, this space up here, this top space, is a restroom facility that is being placed in to be able to service this area. Is that something you would consider, or does that change the project so much that the project at that point?
I'd be in favor.
I'd be in favor.
I'd be in favor of creating an alternate and consider them as two options.
Okay. There will be some expense to do that though, because it is going to take.
Well, we're only two people.
Okay.
Well, can, well, if we do that, can it be designed in such, can the water lines and such be designed in such a way that you can just add it on then without having to?
So we, we've had a discussion with the architect about this possibility. So his intent would be, his preferred intent would be, is like on the building, to build the building out so that it's an empty shell without a floor, so that in fact you could go back and easily plumb this at some future date as a restroom. To extend, to extend the piping in that over from the area where the filtration and system is back into this area. And then what you would end up doing is leaving this area as, as grass. So the savings would be from eliminating all the play elements, reducing the amount of, of concrete, eliminating the bathrooms.
Are there other bathrooms going to be up there?
Yes, because there are bathrooms that are associated with, with the pool that are located over here. So there's like small locker rooms.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to see.
Yeah.
I mean, my only concern is if you do that, I mean, you're eliminating what little kids can use if you take out the spray park.
Well, and I, I think the concern, you know, Mark and I were talking about that. The other, the other thing about this is, what we keep hearing from council is we want this thing to pay for itself. And as you reduce the amount of elements that are there, particularly if you reduce this area, which can be opened up early and held open later, it, it will have an impact on your, you know, your revenue generation ability for the facility. So, but I, you know, I don't know whether that's offset by.
But my vision of an alternate way to get more engaging activity is to broaden some of the other functions that we can get into the park. You know, I've always been an advocate for deck hockey. I think we have a demand for more basketball courts. If you get something that allows the families to get more engaged in what's going in, that I believe is going to contribute to, to usage. I've never particularly embraced the, the toddler part, but I don't mean to say that it's not a good idea.
Yeah, I think we're just saying, make it an option. Let's see what it costs. And I'm with Paul, I think the deck hockey, the basketball, we actually already reached out to Peters Basketball and asked them to help pay for the courts, which they told me they would assist.
Paul, what do you think about part, the costs involved in getting that?
What, getting, making it?
The design?
Yeah.
You want to take a wild ass guess?
We haven't asked that question.
We haven't not asked that question, but it, you know, it's in the thousands of dollars, but it's not, it's not a substantial portion of what the design cost is.
I think tens of thousands.
Yeah, I think that's probably true.
I, I tend to agree with Mr. Coes, or that if you're going to do something like this, I mean, you're basically taking away the function for the little kids. I mean, you know, you know, when I asked before whether we could piecemeal this into a building and a pool and then add on, you told me we couldn't do that. Now all of a sudden, we can? That's what I want to know.
I could tell you personally, I, I, I think implementing this design as it is gives it's a best, best chance to succeed.
I still don't know how we're going to staff it. Well, we can't staff four people at the rec center.
Well, we're not going to staff it. We're going to hire someone, we're going to get a management company to do that.
The only positive is, a majority of this is in summer when there are kids out, and the issue is that all the kids went back to school for the rec center, and they have to be over 18, right?
Yes.
So is it two different?
I mean, the sad truth of the matter is, we live in a different world now than we did three years ago when we were designing. So I mean, we've put so much work into this, we have to send it out and see. I mean, if it comes back in at 12. I mean, if it comes back in at 12 million or 13 million or something like that, then I don't know what we do. It's a shame to walk away from the grants, but at the same time, we can't spend that kind of money to build this if that's what we're looking at.
Not when we're looking at all the other expenses that are coming down the pipe.
Particularly if we're going to be dropping half a million on Hidden Valley Road every two or three years, but that's a whole separate story.
Five million on the dam and millions of potential tension.
But I, but I think looking at all the work that so many people put into this, I mean, we owe it to those who've invested their time and their efforts in this to send it out and see what kind of numbers we get.
And as a consent of the council, you want to bid this with that as an alternate?
Yes.
It can't hurt.
Okay.
But I agree with Gary, I don't see how we're going to find, I mean, how many lifeguards we say you would need at any given time?
Hopefully they get back in the pipeline.
Yeah, but no one wants to work now, that's the problem.
All right. So it takes us to item E, should the authorization of the appropriate township officials to execute the local share account grant agreement.
Yeah, this was the grant that was awarded for the Aquatic Center last year. It's under the local share account program. It's my recommendation that we execute that.
So moved.
Second. And just to clarify, it doesn't lock us in at all. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry six, nothing. Payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I move they be approved and submitted.
Second. Whoever. I thought I, something I thought.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry six, nothing. Be correspondence. Anybody have anything in the reports that they would like to discuss? Paul, do you have anything from this audience?
Nope.
I had one thing I wanted to bring up, following up with our budget workshop last week. To clarify, when are we looking to start staffing the fire station? At what point in the year? Right away?
Probably as soon as we can. After completion, the station will be completed into this year, so January.
Okay, so that's a problem then. I asked the chief about the grant applications, and he said we couldn't have put in the application last year. I did some digging, and he either blatantly lied to us, or he doesn't understand that process, because the way that works is the 2021, fiscal year 2021 grants, for Warren 2022, they were coming out as late as September of this year. So you can't accept the grant for people that have already been hired. So if we follow along with what the chief's saying, we're automatically locked in.
Oh, no, what the chief is saying, and I don't disagree with him on this, what the eventual staffing at that station is will be more than just these two people. And what he's saying, and I believe this to be the case, I don't think you're going to get two safer grants. I think you're going to get one safer grant. And what he's suggesting, and what I would agree with, is if we're going to hire an additional three people to be able to staff that station, that that's when we should apply, when we're going after three instead of two. But, and we would be making that application next year for the purpose of hiring those people in the following year.
But as I further researched, there's, there's no preferential treatment technically given to anybody that applies. If you get a grant, you can apply for another one. I think we ought to be applying for these every opportunity we get. So right off the bat, we're going to lose the bulk of 2023 because we make application, let's say they start giving them out in June, there's 180-day recruitment period to find the people, and then your period of performance is three years. So right off the bat, you said we're locked in.
But it doesn't take us 180 days to find.
Right, but where I was going with that is you could have, we could have applied last year, we could have had this in place to begin staffing that station for first of 2023.
And if council's preference is, you know, we don't have a staff station in that area now, we could postpone staffing it.
Well, no, I don't think we should. I think we should have tried to get free money for it when we had the opportunity.
When's the truck coming in?
It'll be in towards the end, well, no, I take it back, it's going to be in February. It's going to be late.
Yeah.
So I just think that was disappointing that, you know, we were told all along that when he came last year with the previous council, that for three years, we'd be able to staff this on federal funding. And now it turns like we didn't, it turns out we didn't even try to get the federal funding, which, as I said, I think was a big miss, and it's a disappointment. That's all I have to say on that. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss?
Nope.
Nope. Do we have an executive session?
Very short. Next agenda, anything? Okay, meeting is adjourned.